That's present, I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven oh two on this Wednesday.
It's my time.
Welcome, everybody. We do have a handful of things to cover and we'll have something that's that we don't do too often when we get to an executive session a little bit later. We'll discuss that as we get to that point. First, is there need correspondence? Then light is good. Let's move right into consent items. We've got our agenda. I've got meeting minutes from September twenty-four. And then we also have a budget committee appointment. School District Number Seven has recommended Desi Zamudio, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
As their representative on the budget committee. Everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes. Make a motion.
I'll second.
And if it's for all consent items, are we going to do them one at a time?
Oh.
A motion on the table to approve consent items as presented. And second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carried. Reports. Let's just dive straight into board reports. And since Jeanette looks like she's got something exciting to tell us, let's start with you.
No, I'm ready to go.
Okay.
Go to Baker tomorrow in the morning.
Oh, joy.
Seven o'clock.
Drive carefully. Low gear and take your time. I recommend books on tape.
Well, I have a lot. I won't be traveling alone.
Oh, okay.
Wish not.
Ms. Leslie? Anything new and exciting? Any snow out Plushway this week? No? Another dry year then. And maybe tonight. We'll see what happens, whether it just gets a place with us.
Maybe after this.
Yeah.
As long as it doesn't accrue this winter, I'm happy. Mr. Kiano?
All quiet on the northern front, actually.
All quiet on the northern front. That's frightening by itself. Feels like a... Ms. Taylor?
All quiet.
Oh, God. All the way around the board here. I don't have anything earth-shattering to report either. So, Mr. Nash?
Actually, Sarah.
Yeah, quickly that book was passed.
Again, you've got all your normal financial reports in front of you. I'd like to point out on the yellow sheet where it shows that we received twenty thousand less this month this year than we did this month last year. It's because we received our E-rate earlier this year than we did last year. So, last month we received twenty-four thousand more and this year, or this month, twenty thousand less. So, they net each other out.
There is a detailed budget report here if you want to look at any details. The line item levels. Dale, don't disappoint.
She's been, she's, she's sneaking from me this time.
I'll have to commend Desi on the good work. Desi puts these together now.
I have a question, actually, on the check register about the vents for this replacement. Why is it a separate item?
Well, the bid was for the three furnaces and the basic unit. The vents were because we wanted to update the registers that we had in each of our offices so that people could close them if they wanted to, open and close them.
They could use that before.
No, not with the ones in those specific offices. Some were able to do that, but...
How's it all coming? Okay, good.
Yeah, the system works great. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions regarding financial reporting?
Yeah, just one on the, on the back page.
The check register?
The check register fourteen ninety-five. What is personal enrichment class? What would that be?
Oh, that's a fundraiser for the youth mentor program. They offer things like sign language, or raggy quilts, or concealed weapons classes. And people pay maybe forty-five dollars for the class. And the youth mentor program pays the instructor twenty dollars. And then they get to keep the rest of that.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got you. All right, thank you.
Okay, then moving merrily along, let's get to the super ten three four.
I won't pass the buck. I'll pass the outline and the O A E S D legis, the heading platform. First, I thought I, I know Dale was in Paisley last night, but I thought I'd update everybody else a little bit on what transpired with, at the OSBA dinner in Paisley last month. Just hit a few of the highlights that they covered in their presentation. Obviously, we're heading into a legislative session this winter, and so they've got, they've got a lot of, a lot of things going on. Their number one, their number one item on their agenda this year is for every school in Oregon to have a full school year. And that's pretty appropriate because tomorrow, the Oregon Board of Education is considering a new O A R on mandatory school hours. And the big change there would be to raise the K through three hours from eight hundred and ten to nine hundred hours. It would bring it up level of what the expectation is for grades four through eight. At the high school level, it would stay nine hundred and ninety hours. But, you know, right now, there's a lot of schools and school districts that don't need that. And what O D E is proposing is that over three years, that they ramp up from like seventy, eighty, ninety percent of that to, to every school district by two thousand and seventeen, being at a hundred percent of that nine hundred and ninety hours. So, that's, OSBA's number one priority is to provide for a full school year. Other things they talked about real quickly, they would like to see the hundred million in extra revenue that was created last winter to be part of the roll-up costs going into the next millennium. There's some debate about that. Certainly, they're in, very much in support of all-day kindergarten, and they would like to see new money to support that extra A D M cost for, for all-day kindergarten, as opposed to just taking the pie and re-dividing it into smaller pieces to pay for all-day kindergarten. They want to oppose unfunded mandates, which is, of course, music to our ears. They would like to see matching funds for school bonds and seismic upgrades. They predict that there will be no major E S D legislation. There's nothing on the horizon right now that looks like there's going to be any, any new bills to combine E S Ds, get rid of E S Ds, or anything like along those lines. They would like to see open enrollment and inter-district transfer policies, which right now are two different, separate O A Rs. They'd like to see those combined into one, one transfer or enrollment policy. And they would like to see these, or even small schools adjustment made permanent, rather than being turned into a fight every two years. So, that was, and Dale, did you have anything else to?
No, I, my question was just, what are you hearing about the increased hours from, you know, one to three, there's one to three. You think that's going to go, or, or not?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not hearing, they did not discuss that at the meeting, the O A E S D meeting I was at last week, other than just to mention it. I, I don't know. That's, it's a big step, you know, it's almost a ten percent increase for the K through three grade levels.
So, what was it again?
Well, currently, K through three is required to have eight hundred and ten hours a year. And four through eight, nine hundred hours, and high school, nine hundred and ninety hours. And they'd like to make it so K through eight is nine hundred hours, which will be a real, oh, the other thing, I forgot to mention this. The other thing that they would like to do as part of this rule is to eliminate, right now, there's certain exceptions, things that you can count towards the nine hundred, or whatever. There are certain activities you can count towards school time. For example, parent-teacher conferences count, professional development counts, certain assemblies count. What this rule would do would be to wipe all those exceptions. And if it's, if it's nine hundred hours, that means nine hundred hours in the classroom, no exceptions within three years.
I'm a little concerned in that, you know, especially for some of our young kids who have, you know, forty, fifty, or forty miles to travel, you know, at first or second grader, you know, and if you have a four-day week...
Some of those kids in Northlake.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, the other thing is, is, you know, there's also, and I don't know these off the top of my head, but, you know, there's, at every grade level, there's so many hours you can go a day. And, you know, like at the high school, it's six and a half or seven hours. And at the middle school, it's six hours. And at the grade school, it's five hours. So, if they don't change that, and that's another consideration, then they're going to have to add significant numbers of days.
You know, I mean, probably every other Friday or four, four days, you know, so. And I'm concerned about that.
And who's going to pay for it? There, it always goes back to that, too. Who's going to pay for it? There's, you know, there's, there's going to, a lot of these things that we're talking about are going to require a lot of additional money.
Same thing with all-day kindergarten. I think it's great, but you've got a little guy coming from summer night all day, you know. It's really tough.
Yes. Well, and, you know, I realize everybody's in a rush to go have all-day kindergarten. What, what thing's going to be, but why? I'm sure there's going to be some kids that are not going to be quite ready for it.
Young, forty-five-year-old.
Yeah, I was going to say, they won't get a lot in the late afternoons.
We've had a number of kids that were from up there that, they decided to keep them home as a kid, because just coming up, you know, half a day is really tough on them. So, I know how, how this is going to work out.
Last week, I attended the O A E S D Fall Summit, Oregon Association of E S Ds. Nothing huge to report there. One, one of the major important things for me to be up there was, was this O A E S D legislating platform that I, that I've handed out. You can see that the bottom two bullets, the second, last one's probably the important one for us, updating and indexing the funding of grant, Harney, Lake, North Central, and allow E S Ds. The president-elect of O A E S D is on record as saying he would support a twenty percent increase for the five small E S Ds. We've also, in the meantime, had a meeting of the smaller E S Ds, and they are also, I think they are fine with a twenty percent increase. And so, it seems like we're getting a little bit closer to a unified proposal to take to legislature. It's not, it's not certainly finalized yet, but...
Will that be one point two?
Yes. It'll take us to one point two, and then there would be, and there, there's still, the details in this haven't been worked out, but to me, it would be fairly simple. But, a way to index our revenue to the state school support fund. And so, when, when the other E S Ds move up or down in funding, we would move up and, or down in funding as well, except that we would always maintain that million-dollar floor. It would truly be a million-dollar floor, not, not a million-dollar floor and a million-dollar ceiling. So, you can look through that. Nothing, nothing earth-shaking on, on the O A E S D summit beyond that. Some fine-tuning of, of things that we would like to see done in the legislature. In addition to that, support for third-grade reading, early childhood education, things of that nature. Okay, new vehicle. First, bad news, our two-thousand Subaru is no longer with us. I'm only silence. I think it had just gone over two-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, and it blew the head gasket and would have required hundreds of dollars in repairs. And we made a decision to no longer do that.
Where was it when it expected?
It was just coming back from Adele. Came, came off the ski hill.
Who was in it?
Megan.
Megan. She didn't notice any, any steam, any, anything, but there, I can tell you this, I drove out there, there was no coolant in the vehicle whatsoever. So, we're not sure if it just leaked out at some point, or it did overheat, and nobody noticed it. But, you know, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand miles, it was just...
Who was tasked with rolling the odometer back so it didn't hit that three-hundred-dollar number?
Yeah, I want to know that. So...
Have we ever changed the head gasket on it, or not?
With the air? I don't think so.
What happens when it head gasses it? Like, is it just close to a stop?
The, the head was warped, and it would have required...
Overheats. Oh, so you call it overheat.
But it doesn't, I mean, it'd be a crash?
No, 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 no. Actually, Megan, I was proud of Megan. She, she just noticed that the, the heat gauge was, was very high, and she pulled over and called us, and it...
It stopped on her, too?
Yeah, it did die on her.
I guess Subarus are known for head gaskets.
They are.
Oh, yes. We're going through that right now, so.
So, I, I can't remember the timing, if it was right before that or right after that, but never mind. We have ordered a two, a brand-new two-thousand-and-fourteen Chevy Equinox from Hall Motors. I took the Oregon, what happened was, we ended up with, what, twelve or fourteen bids on vehicles?
Yeah.
Something like that. After kicking it around in this office, we decided the Equinox was the way to go. It was absolutely the cheapest vehicle. It was, it's a smaller SUV, but still gets thirty miles to the gallon. Really, it was, I think it met, checked off most of our, our needs with that vehicle. And it was, it was very, the, the pricing was just incredibly low. So, I took it over here to Mr. Hall and slid him, he had submitted a bid, but it was a little higher, let's say. And so, I submitted, I showed him the, the dealership bid from the Oregon procurement program, and he met that price.
Oh, good. Good. That's good.
Also gives you a local service and a local warranty that way.
Exactly.
Which is a plus.
I hope he didn't tell you what I heard one time, which was, we don't feel like we
should be losing money to get you into a car. And I do my bid.
No, and it, it all, it all worked out. They, you know, obviously, they had to come down quite a little bit. I, they, they did some things on their end. I'm not sure what to be able to, to lower their bid to, to the same, same...
But it brought it to the state procurement price.
Yes, exactly.
It wasn't like it's some, some other dealer lost out as a result.
The price is twenty-one-six, twenty-one-seven?
I think it was twenty-one-eight.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, I mean, extremely, for a new vehicle, I, I think it's a pretty, pretty reasonable price. No, no fancy bells and whistles, you know, just a plain, plain Jane. In fact, now, we had to, in fact, it's so plain, we had to order it. They, no dealer, no dealer in their right mind would put a car that's stripped down on the lot.
You have to roll up the windows.
As such, we ordered it, when we ordered it, he said it would be four to six weeks. It's been four weeks right now. He expects it within the next week. It's been built, it's been shipped, it's on its way.
Well, we have to make sure we factor it into the budget, though, is the charcoal, so that we can light that before we leave. Some people put in their pockets to add heat in the trailer, so.
Is it all-wheel drive?
It's all-wheel drive. Yes, it's all, it is all-wheel drive. It's not completely stripped down. Then, we have, just today, had a phone conference with the Reeser Family Foundation, and that grant proposal is moving forward. They told us we would know by the middle of December. They gave, gave us indications that we would probably get funded, so.
And how much was that?
Six thousand dollars.
Oh, good. Wow.
Our, our, our funding stream for this project basically is, currently, we have about thirteen thousand in the vehicle fund, is that correct? We have a six-thousand-dollar grant that, that we will, we have, as soon as we buy the car, then we will submit a request to Collins McDonald for six thousand. And then, we have this other six thousand with Reeser outstanding. So, the good news is, if we get the Reeser money, we won't, we will not deplete our, our vehicle fund. We'll have a few thousand in there for tires.
Because what's the other car that you have, like, oh?
Two thousand and eight, yeah.
How many miles does that have?
It's ninety. Yeah, it's up there.
It's a hundred and forty.
Hundred forty.
Hundred forty.
And what was that? Is that a Subaru?
It's a Subaru, yeah. And it's, in, in the last few weeks, since the other Subaru died, the miles on it have just gone up. And, of course, we are, we are paying a lot of people now to drive private rigs, since we're down to one company rig. So, the sooner the, the Equinox gets here, the better. Tomorrow in Paisley, all the districts are meeting to go through what's called the peer revan, peer review panel process for their teacher and administrative evaluation programs. That's something that's being spearheaded by the E S Ds around the state, and so we'll be doing that. I'll, I'll actually be presenting the E S D evaluation process along with Clutch and Adele, and then Paisley, Northlake, and Lakeview will be doing theirs. We'll, we'll be spending a couple hours tomorrow doing that, so that's kind of, kind of an exciting little thing. Technology consultant, I don't have much to report there. We met with a gentleman, Steve Carlson, who did a, a survey very similar to what we would like. He did it last year for Harney County, but we, we've had, we've had some initial conversations with him. It hasn't really gone beyond that. I believe in my goals. I, I told the board that I'd like to get that done by, by January. I'm not so sure that's going to happen at this point. We're, we're, we're moving slow on that. It's, we've been kind of busy on some other things. And after talking with Mr. Carlson, we're not a hundred percent sure he's necessarily the right one for, for us. So, we'll, we'll, we'll keep kicking it around. Library consultant, hundred-and-eighty degrees different. I, I don't know what you're hearing in some of the schools, but Linda Billu has been working hard ever since last spring. She is transforming libraries around the county. If you get a chance to go into the Paisley library, you'll see that they are cutting the shelves down and completely revamping things. And it's, the lady is a mover and a shaker. She is really, I, I, have you seen much difference at the grade school libraries, or?
I've noticed that there's discarded books. Does, does that have something to do with her, possibly?
She's pretty big on keeping your, your collections current. I know that's kind of a big issue up in Pace.
Oh, yes.
She might have been there one day, but I wasn't sure who, who she was.
She's somebody packing stuff out.
Isn't the in the library, the girl who fits inherently, going up here?
How about number four? Did you use the word service?
I was going to say, I thought, I was going, I was going to wait till I, yeah, because I thought, no, no, I was going to say, did I miss that? So, I'm glad you...
I would have forgotten by then.
No, that's good.
In October, we were contacted by District Seven to help them do their payroll. They've had some personnel changes, and my hat is off to Sarah. She stepped up in October and did many, many, many hours of work to get the District Seven payroll out. This month, District Seven is doing a lot of the data entry themselves, but we are still, we, Sarah is still in charge of their, their final payroll and, and bills for the month.
Is there money?
Moving for, yes, we, we are, right now, what we are doing is billing District Seven for Sarah's time that she's doing for this. Moving forward, the possibility may be that we would, we would take somewhat of a permanent role in this regard, but we don't know. We're, we're just doing what we can't help District Seven at this time, but there's no, no long-range agreement in place yet.
What, what would that mean to us operationally, long-term, in terms of workload? I mean, is that something with existing staff we can really take on?
It, it would be my hope to train Desi and add some hours to her workload. I think it would take a lot of supervision upfront, but she's, currently, she's doing the E S D and Adele payrolls with, I don't think I had any input this month's payroll at all. So, she's got a handle on payroll, and I, I would hope she'd be able to add that, add hours to her.
I would just be concerned about overextending our own staff and what we have.
Yeah.
And, and should we get to the point to have that next discussion, ensuring that the, the, the cost factor is covered?
Yeah.
My concern would be Sarah. It was above and beyond what she did in October. Moving forward, again, yeah, if Desi could, can do the, the bulk of it, I think it's a very good thing for the E S D. Chalkboard grant, I, I think I probably already told you, we did qualify for a second year of chalkboard funding. We're using that to pay for administrator trainings, to do the new evaluation systems around the county. Most of the administrators in the county are taking, taking advantage of that. We're also, next week, going to be meeting with, with a chalkboard representative, talking about future professional development. So, some things going on there. Early learning, as Vicky knows, there's quite a lot going on. We just had a community governance council meeting yesterday. There's, there's really a lot of things going on. Here in Lakeview, there's a couple of, of ladies who are doing a fantastic job getting, coming close to getting a preschool back up and running. It's my understanding that they are hoping to be online in February.
Melinda called me today to update me after our meeting, and she said they are able to open and do preschool now, because it's under four hours a day. So, they're going to be able to do that, but they can't be online till after January to do the daycare because they need something with, about the zoning. And the town of Lakeview is actually holding them up because they said they can't get out there till January. Then, the sanitarium and the fire marshal have to come, so then Rhonda can't come till like March or April. So, I was going to send an email out, I was going to send it out to you tomorrow, and Ken. So, maybe he would like to call and help that along.
Who are the people that are in there?
Huh?
Who wants to open it?
It's at the Four Square, or is it the?
It's the Faith Center, which is right over here next to the bowling alley.
Dietra and Nikki Albertson.
Dietra is...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they are, I'm amazed how quickly they have gotten this thing going.
Yeah. They're doing two, two preschool classes of twelve, eleven or twelve. But then, but they can't do a daycare in the other part of it till the other. So, but yeah, they're going to be serving quite a few kids between them.
Yeah. What would you suggest you get that moving faster?
I was going to email Ken Kessner, since he's chair of the early learning. Don't put that in the paper. No, and just add, you know, see if he can, you know, just let him know, FYI, this is what's slowing it down.
Yeah, you're kidding.
Yeah. And so, Melinda said, from C C and R, she would research it after, she was on the phone with us, and that's what she found out.
Was it a matter of their planning board not meeting because it was December?
I don't know. I don't know. She didn't, so I thought maybe Ken could find that out. Because I know they only meet so often, and then they have to have the plan. I mean, it's not just an overnight thing. So, I'm not sure what it is. But since it's, you know, early, mid-November now, you know, so I just thought, I'd let him know the update. And if he wanted to check, he could check.
Northlake is also hoping to have preschool up and running by this spring. So, yeah. The two grants that, that we're helping with here at the E S D, an early literacy grant, we've, we've sent people over for trainings, and we're getting materials out to, to people on that one. I haven't had much, probably as much direct involvement with that as Vicky has, so I don't know if Vicky has any...
Well, the literacy, the book piece, we're supposed, that's the meeting tomorrow from one to three to vote on the twenty. And so, then we'll find out how many we have to be able to go out with that, with the, the other piece.
And then, at both Northlake and Lakeview schools, we are just beginning to implement the, the kindergarten initiative grant. And there's, we've got Judy Springer here in Lakeview, and Deb Demant up in Northlake, who will be conducting need surveys with parents and staff, and, and starting to implement professional development. Teacher mentoring is going wonderful. We're, we're mentoring fourteen new teachers around the county. And finally, last thing, the copy shop. District Seven has completely revamped their, their math curriculum. They're using a, a curriculum that, that was developed in New York. In fact, it's called Engage New York. It's, it's very common core-directed. There is no textbook for that, so there's a lot of photocopying. And that's one of the reasons that our copy shop business here in the E S D is up sixty-one percent.
Wow.
From July first to November first. Lots of copies. Last thing else we want to talk about. It's good, it's good for us. We like the list. Any, any questions?
Wow, that's a lot. It's a lot going on.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. Okay, so what we have under information and discussion items is a number of first-reading board policies, as some amendments recommended by OSBA. The one thing I would just remind as we go through these, these aren't necessarily things that we have all local control over, so maybe our debate about what needs to be done or not can be throttled as a result, and recognize what OSBA is handing to us for us to understand. So, just in terms of our own time that we put into this. So, with that, Bob, if you would, sir?
Sure. The, the first three, well, actually, the first, the first item is the bidding requirements. We currently have a, a bidding requirements policy, D J C. However, what we're recommending tonight is adoption of the new version two, which is very similar, but slightly more detailed, D J C. And, you know, if you look at the two, you have both of them, you see, you know, the, the new policy has, has a lot more detail to it, too. The real, the real issues are involved in the A R. And I believe in your packet, you just, you have pages sixteen and seventeen of, of that A R. And I believe in your packet, you have pages 16 and 17 of that AR. What this AR does is go through the process for exemption from competitive bidding. And that is, that is the big change to the AR. You can see there, I think there's on page 16 and 17, yeah, in yellow, you have the highlighted changes that you would have to go through to the exemption from the bidding process. These, this policy and this AR are highly recommended.
Now, you said recommend for adoption. This is really the first reading tonight?
Yes, yes. We are not doing this tonight. We do not want to do this one tonight. The other change is that it lowers the, it lowers from $10,000 down to $5,000 the cutoff for the posting of the waiver from pending here.
Do we have a local contract with you committee?
It's you guys. It's the board. Questions on that one?
It's all good stuff and the exemptions to the process sometimes are interesting to weigh when you have a particular project deployed, but it's pretty darn important to measure it very carefully.
Yes. The second, the second one is policy EVV, Integrated Pest Management. You gotta love this. This policy, the only change to it is for 15 years around the state, you've had for hazardous chemicals, you've had material data safety sheets. They are now changing these to safety data sheets. And so everybody's gotta change their policy just because of that change from MDSD to SDSS.
Boy, that's gonna be a bug or something.
And this one actually, if you want it, you could adopt this one in one region. It is required, it's just renaming the sheets that we track hazardous chemicals with. Okay. The third topic is on electronic communications. It seems like every time you turn around, there is a change to electronic communications. And so what we're looking at here is policy IIBGA, which we currently have, and the IIBGAR. Okay, if you look at the proposed IIBGA, the only change is a paragraph that says "The superintendent will establish administrative regulations for use of the ESD's system, electronic system, by staff using their own personal electronic devices to download and store ESD proprietary information, including personally recognizable information about ESD students or staff." Okay, so what this says is if someone is using their iPad or their iPhone or their personal laptop for business, we have to have, in our employee handbook, we have to have language and a policy about that. Now, I can tell you a couple of things about that. First of all, we currently don't have anybody using any of their personal electronics for company business, okay? And it will be very simple to put that language in the, in our employee handbook that says that actually, what I would like to put in there is, is prohibited without the superintendent's approval and then if the superintendent gives that approval, here's what has to happen. I don't foresee that we would ever have an employee that we would expect to use personal electronic devices for ESD business. I still think it's... So, that's the change in the policy and then the AR, pretty much just, you know, spells that out, of course, in a great amount of detail about how that's done.
And this is something- This is really pretty widespread in terms of the personal use because it subjects your, data being what it is, who owns the data? Well, in this instance, a public entity owns the data, which means the data is subject to public records requests.
It is our proprietary data. Yeah, that's why I would be very hesitant to give anyone approval to use a personal electronic. It would have to be an emergency situation. Oh, and by the way, that electronic policy in AR are required.
What does it mean, number seven, ESD software defined as any?
Yep. I accidentally cut that off and I copied and pasted it into- It says, "As any commercial or staff develops software acquired using ESD resources." That is the full sentence. Sorry about that.
They're also looking for closure and there was no period there. This is gonna be a hot topic nationwide moving forward, though, is data and personal interaction with-
Who owns it? Yeah, yeah. And that's, I think it just, to have an employee using a personal device just opens too many cans of worms.
Well, in the state of Oregon, there is an incident in the last six months where a district attorney, not in Lake County, lost their cell phone, boom, to an investigation, just like that, based on dialogue that occurred with a search request. All of this person's personal photographs, all their contacts and everything were now part of that information. Not that the information was part of the investigation, but it was housed on the device that had been used for communication. Boom, gone. Hopefully we give it back to you in a couple of years. That's the reality of technology and what we have today that's catching up to us.
Just out of curiosity, was that cell phone paid for by his office or was it just because he was using his own personal cell phone?
In that instance, it was not stipend-related.
Really?
Correct.
That's good to know.
Because the data, it is owned by the public municipality in that instance, which meant that it was, the data was part of the investigation, not what the person had on their phone, but the fact that that device was used, it's part of the investigation trail. So we're going to see much more of that in the coming years nationwide, without a question. We got by for so many years with a party line and waiting until Aunt Jo was done to call somebody versus instant ratification.
The third area is on prescription and non-prescription medication and these are policies that have been changed several times in the last few years. First off, I'll preface this by saying that these policies really, they're required, but they don't really apply to the Lake ESD because we don't run a school. We don't have our own separate classrooms. Therefore, they don't really, you know, because particularly like if our special ed or speech teachers are out in the other buildings, they operate under the school districts protocols, which of course are gonna be, since these are required policies, gonna be the same as these. But these are not something that's gonna have a direct impact on us. First of all, we currently do have a policy, JHCD-A, on administering injectable medicines to students, which is now being changed to prescription medication policy and you can see, you know, quite a few changes to that. And then, non-prescription, we don't currently have that one, but it's also now being required. And then there is one AR that covers both policies. And again, it just, it spells out where the medication's to be kept, what kind of training the employees have to have in order to administer it, what kind of directions have to come from the parents and all of those sorts of procedures. We don't, we certainly don't keep any student medication in this building and we are not in charge of the other buildings.
Questions on that?
As an aside, what is the mechanism that separates youth mentor program activities from classroom activities?
You know, I don't know what the youth mentor programs protocols are in terms of that. I would have to do a little bit of research on that to see what steps, if any, they have taken regarding prescription, non-prescription medications. I am not, I'm not familiar with that at all.
Because their time is less than the classroom and, I mean, it's only a few hours. You wouldn't think that they would administer-
I ask only as a matter of, again, third-party outside looking in. Do people or will, will like third parties someday, somewhere down the road distinguish the difference between?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because if it's an ESD sponsor or something.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Just might be something to consider.
I will ask Auntie on get back to you on that one. I don't have any-
I'm impressed.
Yeah.
Well done, Bob.
No kidding.
Have a good one.
It's just about my ability.
Yeah.
And then, the final one is actually an optional policy. No, excuse me. There's a highly recommended. Let me look. I confused myself. Is it highly recommended? That's right. I just looked at the policy. Yeah, it says optional. This would be the AR for, no, I've lost it. I've got too many pieces of paper. I have completely lost it.
You meant KL-AR?
Yeah, KL-AR. What did I have happen to mine? Mine has disappeared. Thanks. And it is optional. The only thing I like about it, though, is that it spells out the steps very specifically, goes through, you know, the timelines and steps. Your current AR kind of mushes everything together. This separates it out into five, into just, you know, very concise steps and so I thought it was, it would be a good upgrade. Mine must have gone. It's a while ago. Any questions on any of those?
Is there, you've mentioned that with the EV, integrated pest management, there's an option to actually adopt it in first reading. Is there really any benefit to us doing that or keeping this as approved?
Let's just keep it. Just make it easier.
It's easier for me.
Yeah. I was listening. Okay, OSBA resolutions. Now, these are going to be action items, but these are action items. So since you are the well-versed one, oh great one.
Oh boy, here we go. Where did I put this? Hopefully I keep better track at the end than I did with the hand card. Yeah, there are, there are three items that OSBA has asked us to consider for adoption. The first, the first item is their legislative priorities and policies. And I'm just, I'll read through the headlines here. Support for student achievement, stable and adequate funding, empowering locally elected school boards, opposing mandates, as we said before, promoting capital construction and capital improvements. That was one of the ones I mentioned. Containing educational cost drivers such as FERS. Investing in Oregon public schools, reforming tax policies, mandate relief, paperwork reduction.
Paperwork reduction. Are you kidding?
State Department of Education supporting districts, there's a novel concept. Financial and program accountability, state bonding for capital and infrastructure needs, school improvement, special education, ESDs. I'll actually read that one. OSBA supports the role of ESDs to assist school districts in achieving Oregon's educational goals by providing equitable, high-quality, cost-effective, locally responsible educational services on a regional basis. Curriculum, technology, online education, public charter schools, yay. Current technical education, post-secondary opportunities, collective bargaining, employee rights and benefits, teacher and administrator licensing. I'll tell you guys, one thing that is becoming just a crisis in the state is the underfunding of TSBC and how long it takes to get somebody licensed. It is just a crime. There's a few people in the legislature that do not like TSBC for whatever reason. It's becoming a huge problem. Teacher and administrator quality, support for OEIB. So those are the, those are the policies and priorities. Then the second one is the amendments to the OSBA constitution. There are basically two amendments. On the third page, there's new language about filling unfilled regional representation on the board, on their legislative priorities committee. Is that what LTC is, legislative? Yeah, legislative policy committee. You can see, they lay it out. If no one files for election, the board director should recruit an individual from the region. If they can't recruit an individual from the region, they'll look for somebody next door. If they can't find somebody that's contiguous, they'll appoint somebody else. And then on the very back page, the second change is the legislative policy committee shall develop legislative policies which are recommended to and approved by the membership as a resolution proposed by board of directors and voted on by the membership in accordance with Article 11. And then finally, the third proposal is they would like the board to consider supporting their, their big legislative push this year, which they are calling the Promise of Oregon. I think you'll start to see some things. You may see some TV or radio ads. They're using actual students to try to, I think the bottom line on this is to underscore with the legislature that education should be priority one.
So all they're looking for in these resolutions is an acknowledgement from this board that we agree with their attempts to improve, isn't it?
They would very much like to be able to go to the legislature and say that X number or X percentage of school boards and ESD boards in the state have supported these proposals.
And is this going to be something that will be in some more formal format, a resolution or a letter or something presented to OSBA? My question is, if we were to look at this and if this is a possible action item, what is it we're taking action?
You know, I think the clearest one, of course, is the two constitutional changes. Those going to the OSBA constitution and approve. Secondly, the legislative priorities. I don't know what, I'm not familiar enough with OSBA to know, you know, logistically, what, how many school boards it takes for them to, to, you know, at what level those things become legislative policies. I don't know that. And I know this, this last one is pretty much just a, it's a public relations campaign. That's really all it is.
So using that as an example, on the back of this Promise of Oregon is a sample of an actual resolution being adopted. I guess that's my point.
Yes.
Is the board going to do something other than make the gesture or will we have some, written something that will go with this?
It's actually an online vote.
Okay.
On the policies and the priorities.
Okay.
Whether or not you support tasks or approves those resolutions. Then I go online and submit your vote and the date of the board.
Okay, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Did that make sense, what Debbie was just saying about the question about the resolution? The way this reads is they're looking for us to adopt or approve a resolution of sorts, but there isn't a physical document we're going to do. This board's action, if we agree with this and move on this or not, enables Debbie to go online to lend the Lake ESD's voice to the actions. Okay, so I was just looking for, this is a sample of a resolution for one of the three, one of the four items, but there wasn't any other resolution and I, if we make a decision, I kinda like to know what that is.
We don't wanna be agreeing blindly.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I think that's wise.
So if, but if, if what I understand, we're, we have the option of doing tonight is we can approve or agree that these resolutions are a good idea, that vote, that agreement then allows Debbie to go online and lend the ESD's voice to that, correct? Okay. So, clear as mud? It's not a resolution that is of our own making for our own internal organization. So, as we've gone through the first reading of board policies, and it's just at a first reading, now O S B resolutions, we will all take these one at a time, we'll buzz through all of them and consider a motion at that point. Good, and we'll continue right on to what the auditor R F T is. And as you know, we go out for, is it every three years, I believe? Request for proposals for audit services, which includes services to the component school districts that we support. And what we have is a example of the R F Ts to be flown, if you will. Not terribly different than what we've done in the past. Any questions about the process or what's needed, or is there anything you wanna add, Sarah, to?
Is there any reason Plush didn't wanna put their monies down, or is it just not available? I just looked at that one. Why is the next step?
No, because I procrastinated on asking people for their figures until the day or the day before we needed to put this in the board packet. I have Plush's numbers. I know.
Are we going to do with you?
Like you have nothing else to do all day. I can have Plush's numbers and they'll be included.
Okay, it was just curious. I was like, wow, that looks weird.
Yeah, that's a reasonable explanation.
So this, this would go out in December. Proposal due date, March 13th. We, of course, would review those following the opening of that and make a recommendation.
How many responses did we get last time? Do you remember?
Two, yeah.
Probably the same thing this time.
Yeah, the first couple of times we went out, we had more responses. But last time we went out, we asked for a, if, if an audit firm had received any findings in their peer review letter, we asked for a copy of that letter. And so we only received two responses, both from entities that had no findings, of course. So I'm not sure, no, we wanted, I don't know if we wanna take it out in order to get more responses, but then, you know, if they have findings, we'd probably wanna know.
Yeah.
So I think it's kind of, yeah, I don't know.
It's a good part of the vetting process right up front.
It is, it is. I don't know if we wanna save it for step two or if we want it upfront and just, so they know we're gonna ask, but.
I think just keep it upfront. Might as well.
Okay.
It's part of our own paperwork reduction act. Okay, so the last item we have under information discussion is an update on the furnace installation and equipment removal.
We're gonna table that until the executive session.
Okay. So I am looking for a motion on whether or not this board agrees with and supports the O S B A resolutions as presented.
We'll make a motion that we agree with resolutions, or support them, I should say.
Motion made and second to support O S B A in their resolutions moving forward as, yeah, already said, as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. And we don't need any action on the R F T doing.
No.
Okay. Okay, so that's action items. So with that, what I would like to do is we would like to retire to executive session under O R S 192 dot 660, subsection 2, subsection H. Remaining in the discussion will be board members. Press is allowed to remain, but the camera's off and the press is gagged.
One question. Will you be reconvening regular session or will executive session end tonight?
We will reconvene.
Okay.
And I believe do, will we going to have Debbie and Sarah both remain?
Yeah, I'd like both to remain.
Okay. In that case, with that at 7:56, we'll retire from regular session into executive. Back into regular session at 8:36. After having just been in executive session under O R S 192 660, subsection 2, subsection H, no decisions were made. With that, there was discussion regarding recent work done with the contractor at the E S D. And would we like to proceed with any action or let this matter rest?
I suggest that we do write a letter to the contractor suggesting a compromise. And that not forthcoming, that we will involve complaint procedures to the contractor's board.
Is that a motion or suggestion?
It's a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion on the table, made and second. Do you send a letter to the contractor we discussed? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I always like to ask that, even though it's not on the agenda. Anything specific that's for the good of the group as we walk into the holiday season? Very good. You maintain a motion? Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
We'll just call you comrade from now.